Welcome back, everybody. It is 2:05. We'll get back on our agenda item here. We are now on Agenda Item 18A for Discussion Only. Discussion and Presentation Regarding Possible Amendments to Title 18 of the Carson City Municipal Code, which establishes local ordinance provisions related to zoning. Lee, want to take us through this, please?
Good afternoon. Lee Plamell, Community Development Director. I have a presentation here. Just like to go through, I think, to go through this. We're going to be discussing Chapter 1805 today and Division 1 of the Development Standards, which is Land Use and Site Design. And what I kind of plan to do is hit a couple key points in a presentation that the Planning Commission, in their discussion, has brought up and wanted the board to have further discussion on. And then perhaps go back and go through other sections of the codes as you see fit. But I'd like to start off, just for anybody watching, and start off with a little bit of background that I tried to get information out as much as possible, that we are in this process of reviewing Title 18, the zoning code, and all the draft documents with proposed changes. The latest documents are available at carson.org/titlet18, so they can be downloaded there. And on the website there is how to get comments to us regarding, if you have comments regarding anything. And just a reminder, as we're doing this without being able to have public workshops with the public actually in attendance, we're kind of having some extra meetings with the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors. Kind of for each section, the plan is to have discussion with the Planning Commission, have discussion with the board. And that's where we are in the process, which is early. We still need to go back to the Planning Commission for final recommendations before coming back to the board with an ordinance. So getting into the sections that you have in your packets today. You have, what you have is a summary sheet, is a sheet for each chapter with the summary of the substantive changes. Then you have the sections with all the text revision markings on it, so you can see what the changes are. What's up on the screen is kind of the table of contents for both of the chapters that you're looking at. And I've just kind of marked in red there is where there's other, where they're being deleted, and there's other sections that it's covered in or it belongs somewhere else, or it's covered somewhere else. Or there's other chapters that we haven't discussed yet that are related to it that need to be folded into those chapters. But this 1805 General Provisions and Land Use and Site Design, these are good chapters to talk about together because as you can see, there's quite a bit of overlap where there's some of the same issues that are discussed across both of them. There's a lot of deletions because issues are covered elsewhere in Title 18 or at least should be moved there and will be covered there. Which kind of gets me to my final point, just on this slide, is that kind of actually have a meeting set up to start to talk to the DA's office about how to reorganize this. We're going through this in the order it is now in terms of the chapters and things, but we foresee a pretty significant reorganization of these to group things together a little better and make it more easier to manage on the different topics, for someone to get through and see what all the standards are related to specific uses. So that's kind of been the general overall approach and discussion with the Planning Commission so far. So getting into some of the discussion items specific to the code amendments. So these are the points that I wanted to make sure we cover today. If we don't get through the whole thing, these are kind of the highlights. And specifically, there's a points where the Planning Commission had quite a bit of discussion, even specifically asked for some policy direction from the board. And so I just want to spend a little bit of time on each of these items. And I think this also covers most of the questions that I've heard from board members, too. So I think through this discussion, besides some of the other little stuff, this covers the bigger stuff that there's been questions on. And that's home occupation. And kind of just, we'll start with that on the next slide. But just talk about, you know, there's a little bit of discussion about what a home occupation is. And kind of in the modern day, should more employees and customers be allowed to come to the home for businesses? Development Standards 1.4 is guest buildings. And this is a discussion we've had in various forms or another over the last couple of years regarding current standards that limit family member, that limit the use of guest buildings on properties to family members and non-paying guests, and which means it can't be rented out. And I know you had public comment this morning from one person regarding this. And then Development Standards Storage Containers. Another kind of topic that's been at the top of code enforcement recently and also discussion with the Planning Commission about storage containers in residential districts. So is there any, before I dive into the topic specifically, any general questions at this point?
Would you prefer that we ask you even specific questions now or to wait as we go through?
Well, if it's okay, let's start with, so my proposal would be to start with these three things, starting with home occupations, and go through these and get comments individually and then move on to other sections.
That's fine.
Okay, so I'll move on to home occupations. And this is on, the section with all the markings is on page 999 of your packet. On the screen on the presentation, I have just kind of the, four of the sections that were a topic of kind of specific discussion with the Planning Commission. And I could say where they landed on this is not much in the way of changes. You could see on, except for one change on these four paragraphs, there's no changes proposed, but there was discussion about whether or not there should be changes. And so just to highlight this, it's, paragraph two is a sale of merchandise, which says that you can't conduct business in person at your home. If you're selling something or providing a service and you have your office in your home, this is just kind of the general way home occupation is where. You have your office in your home, but you don't conduct business there. People don't come there to buy things. They don't come there for services. You go to other people's homes or through the internet, or you have internet sales or something like that. But that's kind of, that's always been kind of the general intent of home occupations. Number four is employees, no onsite employees. And kind of the question came up as well. Does that mean you can't have a bookkeeper come over? You can't have anybody come over and help? Like, and yeah, that's what that means, is no employees at the residence. And number five is kind of, talks about the character. And I think that's the key to kind of the purpose of it is that the characteristics of the residential nature should not be changed by signs, sounds, noise, dust, odors, fumes, et cetera. Which kind of points to why the standards are what they are. And then finally, on the slide there is, number six is traffic. And there's some discussion, what that says is currently is deliveries from commercial suppliers may not be made more than once a week. There's a lot of discussion about that. Obviously, with these days, a lot of things are delivered. And just even at a normal residence, you buy things, FedEx comes, UPS comes. They drive by your house every day. So I think that was kind of the purpose of once a day. But in kind of, after discussing a little bit with Supervisor Giomi and just some questions, and I would even suggest that if what the Planning Commission would say, there may not even be really the need to say that, to limit deliveries specifically because, to a number of days. Because you really, is something that has big commercial suppliers is not going to be conducted with the other limitations. It's not someplace where people come to pick up things. It's not a place where big commercial deliveries are going to be made. And people use UPS. So if there were a change there, I would suggest that the second sentence in number six could be deleted so that you would just say pedestrian vehicle traffic shall be limited to that normally associated with residential districts. So that kind of covers the, that's a little bit, covers what the Planning Commission's discussion was. And we'd be happy to hear your thoughts on home occupations.
Go ahead, Lori.
So in general, I want to understand, is someone that sells Tupperware or Mary Kay products, things like that, that considered a home occupation? Because that's how you obtain your business license, that you're going to do that. So by reading this, are you suggesting that if I was a Mary Kay distributor, they can't come to the house and pick up their Mary Kay products? They can't have a home-based party in my home and sell the product? Did that discussion come up?
Well, not Mary Kay, Tupperware, or Tupperware in particular in the discussion. But kind of generally, yes. I mean, I think that's what was in the thought process, is why can't you do these things? But you know, the other thing I didn't say in the presentation, but I did tell the Planning Commission and others, we actually do get code enforcement complaints when businesses have their employees come to the residence or people are coming to the residence to drop off and pick up goods and merchandise. We get complaints about that. So I don't think, this isn't an issue that nobody cares about. Because certainly, the neighbors do care when somebody parks in front of their house and then go walk across the street and it occurs. We certainly do hear about it. To your, directly to your question is, you know, the Mary Kay person should be technically, per the code, having the parties at other people's houses going to do their goods and services elsewhere.
But they're still doing it to a residence. I guess that's what I'm questioning.
Right. And I think that's, and that's the question.
Right, that's the difference.
That's the other side of the argument that the Planning Commission had, is that, well, people visit people at their houses besides business purposes, right? That is the other side of the argument.
Right. And I'm just, what I'm indicating is I could have 10 people at my house because I'm the distributor or whatever. Or I go next door to my neighbor's house and host the same 10-person party because they all get hostess benefits. There is nothing in our code that prohibits, I guess that's what I'm after, is we're not prohibiting residential-based, home-based party plans.
No, that's, yeah, I don't know that it's specifically covered, but as a matter of practice, it's certainly, you know, I think when the Mary Kay person comes in and gets their business license, they understand all of these. But it doesn't prohibit them from going to somebody else's home and then that person inviting other people over for the products. And it's certainly not the intent of it. You know, in writing the code, we have to think of the other, kind of all situations, not just the, you know, that's kind of a little bit of an unusual one, actually.
I just bring that up to let people know. So the objective then is to say that the reason I'm not going to let you do it in your own home is because you'll do it all the time and bother your neighbors versus occasionally, I'm on that block, whatever, this week, and I'm over there the next week. And I just want to have common sense to the policy and why we're doing what we're doing is to say, I don't want a home occupation business having regular customers and saying, "Okay, Lori, come to my Mary Kay party every Wednesday." So that the residential zones are not impacted, that it's, nope, Lori, you can go to Lee's house this week. And you guys want some Mary Kay? I'll come to Stacy's house next week. So that's the difference.
Yeah, that's a good summary of it. It's the focus of everybody coming to the one point and impacting that one neighborhood versus being dispersed.
I think I could use some Mary Kay sometimes.
You'd like that comment?
No, you could tell that I probably need some. I think that that's exactly how I interpret this, that you can run your Tupperware business at home and you just can't have people coming there all the time, picking up their merchandise and you having parties there. Because I can see, look, we've all known, I mean, I know the three of us have a shared acquaintance who's no longer with us, who used to get upset if anyone parked in front of her house. So, you know, you can imagine if this happens every single day. So I don't have any issue with the language in here. My only comment was, I think it's unrealistic to say you can only get one delivery a day because, you know, I may get a UPS package and a FedEx package in the same day. So I would be for removing the last line of Section 6, as you suggested, Lee. And the language you've added in 14 and 15 to this section, I think is appropriate. And I think the rest of that is appropriate. I don't think we want to allow, you know, staff members to come there. This is for that single occupant person who's doing a business at their home. You know, so that was my only comment.
Any comments, John?
Yeah, my question's probably off-base here because there's a gray area in my mind. You're talking about a home business. And I have a friend in another state, so wouldn't affect that friend, who has a vacation rental by owner business and has converted the garage into something that's now an Airbnb for a smaller, so they can rent out to, say, groups in one case and just a couple maybe in another. This doesn't seem to have anything to do with that, but would it? And then, or would it have to do with the accessory part in the next section? Accessory structure part.
Well, in Carson City, he would need a business license to do that. But we would, yeah, we would have a discussion on the Airbnb, on the guest building, probably comes up shortly when we talk about guest buildings for here. But for any, but somebody may have a business where they rent other properties. They own other properties and rent them. And if it's more than four, they need a business license.
If it's more what?
I think if it's more than, if it's four, I forget if it's more than four or four than, or four or more rental properties, it's a business and you need a business license, which you may run your office out of your house.
These are just two, on the same property, though.
Yeah, that's, to us, that's a guest building issue, not a business license issue.
Okay, well, I'll wait then.
Lee, on Item 3, no, excuse me, 2, where it says that federally licensed gun dealers are exempted. Is your interpretation that federally licensed gun dealers would include gunsmiths, who also are required to have FFLs and are also required to, in some cases, to run the business out of their home?
Let me see if I can pull up my definition real quick of gun dealers. Because I recall, I remember when that came through because it was an exemption that was put in a little bit later, not with the original adoption. Because gun dealers are allowed to have, well, anyway, it was something that came before as a request and it's changed because they're required to do business from there.
Right. Their FFLs are registered to their home address and that's where ATF comes and does their inspections. And gunsmiths are subject to those same rules unless they have a commercial leased location.
Because, yeah, and I want to say that gunsmiths was included in that definition. And, but if not, I can, either way, if I can go back and look at that and see if gunsmiths are covered and if they need to be covered, then to say that.
Do we have any additional questions or comments on 18.05.045, home occupation? So then the two items on this, Lee, are to delete the second line in Item 6 and to make sure that gunsmiths are included in, under the definition of federally licensed gun dealers in Number 2. And then we can move on to the next item.
Okay, to get right back into the discussion on guest buildings. So as I said, this section, Division 1.4 in the Development Standards begins on page 1,026, 1026 in your packet. And again, there's just some select sections up on the screen there. You have the complete sections in your packet. But just kind of what's up there to discuss a little bit about what's proposed to be changed. And then some of the discussion with the Planning Commission. You know, the primary thing from the introductory paragraph there is that guest buildings are, well, they include, they can include permanent facilities for living, sleeping, cooking, and sanitation. So it can be a separate unit with full kitchens. They're limited in size currently by the standards. However, the, actually, the main point of discussion has been at the bottom there, Number 10, which is that, and also by definition, guest buildings may only be occupied by the family members of the primary residence and their non-paying guests. Guest buildings may not be rented as secondary dwelling units. So this is kind of, this is a, that's really the primary point of discussion that's been brought forward in the past, is the pros and cons of being able to rent them. You heard a little bit from, I forget who, Sarah Adler this morning about the pros of having smaller guest units available to rent, whether it be for the benefit of the property owner or just as an affordable housing option. Where the Planning Commission falls on this, as a majority of the Planning Commission, not everybody, is that having secondary units of any size on a lot is tantamount to having multifamily zoning, a second unit, duplex zoning, and all the impacts that go along with that, with the additional cars, noise, just general activity, et cetera. And I think that's, if the Planning Commission were to make a recommendation, that's where it would land. In addition to that, some, just-
Can I ask you a question? Sorry to interrupt you, though. But there was also discussion by the Planning Commission that the actual impacts are the same, whether it's a family member or whether it's a tenant. So can you explain a little further how parking, traffic, all these other things are going to be impacted if all those accessory dwelling units are currently occupied by family members? Like, I'm just having a little trouble understanding, what's the additional impact? They're already occupied.
Yeah, I'm not the person to make the argument for them necessarily, for that side. That is kind of the other side of the-
If there was discussion at the Planning Commission on that, can you relate to us what that discussion was?
Yeah, the, well, I think the bottom line is that if it's open for rentals, there's a fear that people will build them for rentals. So right now, if it's family members, we have a relatively limited number of guest buildings, of, you know, guest buildings that have been built in Carson City, probably primarily because they're limited to family members and guests. But if you make an open market to be able to rent them, I think there's a fear among many, many of the commissioners that that opens it up and then people will build them to rent them and have another source of income. So that you will have not just the occasional guest building in a neighborhood where a family member's there, but now you have a separate family and you have more of them because they're rented and you have people buying properties and building secondary units just to rent both units, which you could fix by having owner occupancy requirements on one of those.
And regarding additional construction of ADUs, that's still going to be subject to 18.05.055 accessory structures, correct? They're still going to have to go through that process, potentially get a special use permit, although I do want to go back to that because those parameters are also changing. So just remind me, before we finish our discussion here, to go back to that one.
Right, we're talking, yeah, in this section, we're talking specifically about a guest building. So it's habitable space with kitchen facilities, secondary units that are detached. Separate from that, they are also, if they're detached from the main building, they are also accessory structures and also have to comply with accessory structure requirements, including size limitations. Although, these have their own size limitations, but in aggregate of all accessory dwellings, they would have to comply with those requirements as well. And just to finish with my slide here, that the couple things I have. You know, one of the suggestions that kind of passed through the Planning Commission is to require a slightly larger minimum lot size than zoning may allow because we do have single-family 6,000 zoning. But there's a proposal to require a minimum of 8,000 square feet before you can have an accessory dwelling, a secondary, a guest building. And then also, another change, but consistent with the zoning, is to, is to limit, rather than have the size, so there's, in 4A and B is the permitted size. And basically, if you have less than half acre in the zone, you get 700 square feet. And if it's on one acre or larger, it's 1,000 square feet. But it's added in there so that you have to have, in single-family zoning districts, sometimes there's lots that are less than that. So it's that, in any case, doesn't matter what zoning district you're in. If you have less than a half acre, 21,000 square feet, you only get 700 square feet. So that's just, that's just a pretty minor thing added in there. But that summarizes the changes.
Is there specific language in here that limits ADUs to one per parcel? Or is the only limitation the square footage based on parcel size? And then the additional requirements for accessory structures?
That's a good question. Get to the right page.
The reason I ask is because I didn't see it.
Yeah, no, you know, it's always been assumed and inferred that it's one guest building. And in no case has anybody ever had two, but it refers to a dwelling unit, yeah. A guest building may provide, I think that's some clarifying language. It would be good that you're only permitted to have one.
I was contacted as well regarding a requirement to have, the property owner must be an occupant of either the primary or the accessory dwelling unit. And so Sarah Adler this morning, she proposed a 30-day minimum rental requirement. So we have that, the proposed owner occupant or occupation requirement, one ADU per parcel, changing the minimum parcel size to 8,000 square feet. Were there any other changes from what was in our text that you can remember? And then we'll go to additional board members for questions.
No, no additional, just to follow up. So regarding the owner occupancy and the 28-day time limit, those, so under, those aren't in there now and aren't being proposed because they're not rentals. But those are things we would suggest, including if we eliminate the limitation to family members and non-paying guests, we would add those. But they're not applicable because if you can't rent it out, you can't have a short-term rental. If they're family members or non-paying guests, they're just visiting.
Understood.
Yeah.
Stacy?
I was a little bit confused by Sarah's comments this morning because she said that the proposed language expands the use of accessory dwelling units. And so I don't, she confused me when she made that comment. She wasn't asking for it. She said-
Changes just from being able to rent to family members to being able to rent to anybody.
But this language, the proposed language in her packet, doesn't say that. But, correct, but she did not say that. It's, what I heard her say was that, "I appreciate the changes you've made so that we can allow it to be rented out." So either I misunderstood her or, in any case, I was confused by that because I said, "I read this, it didn't say that." I'm of the belief that the language should stay the way it is. I get- I get the argument for affordable housing. I'm not sure this is the way to get affordable housing. If I build an accessory structure of 1,000 square feet and I think, I think we're crazy if we think people are going to rent it out for less than market value. I don't know why you would. Why would you build it and rent it out for less than what the market will bear? So I don't know that that's going to solve the affordable housing issue. And I think if, there is the possibility to have three or four of these on a block and then you are really talking about parking issues and duplexes essentially. So I would not support, I would not support that. I like the language the way it is, and I'm good with the language changes that you've proposed in Division 1.4 now, including the 8,000 and some of the other changes you've put in here.
Laurie?
So, being a member of the Housing Task Force, I will say that we are looking to turn over every rock that we can to be able to provide housing in our community that every sector can afford. And so the discussion here is, I highly doubt that miraculously people are going to go spend $100,000 to build an accessory unit if you're living in it. So I liked the proposal as long as you had to be a resident, the owner had to be a resident in one of the structures, because I think that's what will keep the control component. And then also, I liked Ms. Adler's idea of indicating that it had to be at least 30-day rentals so that nothing became vacation homes and impact that, like Stacy was saying, we, I don't think any of us envision wanting that in our residential zones. But I do know there's a couple of hundred vouchers that people have nowhere to live. And if we have an opportunity to not have people on the street, I think last time I talked to you, Lee, we have 30, if I remember that you looked this up, there are 30 accessory dwelling units. And if half of them are currently occupied by the loved one that they made it for, that's 15 to 20 more people we can help get off the street with their voucher. That means somebody also has to want to do it. Not all owners are going to want someone in an accessory dwelling. You know, they did it for their loved one, that they built it for their mom or their dad that they didn't want under their direct roof, but close enough they could help them. So I'm in support with conditions, because I'm with Stacy on, I don't want to see it become vacation home rentals and things like that, but with conditions, I could support it.
John?
Well, it doesn't matter to me, but if I read this and what you're talking about, it sounds like people aren't looking for the kind of situation I described in another state in another jurisdiction with an Airbnb and a VRBO on a property that was originally owned. But what I fear, and the reason I kind of like this, the way I see it now, is that what happens is people build an accessory structure for, I don't want to use this term, but I'll use it because it's descriptive, you know, the mother-in-law building, and then mother-in-law dies and then they start renting it out. So am I right? This would not allow that. And what Sarah Adler was suggesting wouldn't allow that either, right?
You're correct in what it says now, but I think, I think Sarah Adler was advocating to allow them as rentals.
Right, and you're saying that the Commission looks at it pretty much the same way.
And the majority of the Planning Commission would recommend it as written here, which does not allow the rentals.
Okay, I tend to agree with what's been said here, too.
All right, my feeling on this is that I could be supportive of changing this from just a family member to general rentals with these additional conditions that is either a 28- or 30-day minimum rental agreement, that the owner must, the property owner must be an occupant of either primary or the accessory dwelling unit, that there's only one accessory dwelling unit allowed per parcel, that the minimum parcel size is changed to 8,000 square feet. With those changes, I think that if you require the property owner to be an occupant of one of the structures, that's going to create a self-policing environment. I don't know how many owners would be willing to build an accessory dwelling for the income because with the cost of construction, that doesn't really make a lot of sense. It would take several years before, many years actually, before they would actually see any positive cash flow from that over the cost of the construction. So I don't see that happening. I think if the owner is living on the property, they're going to be very careful about how, who they rent to, so I'm not sure how much help it will be for Section 8 tenants because there's that additional component that if they're going to rent it out, they're going to want market rent. And that's not what they're going to get paid from a Section 8 voucher. So I just think that it creates a self-policing type of scenario. So I would be supportive of changing the language in 10 to change it from only family members to members of the public with these other changes. Having heard the comments here, we may end up in a 2-2 vote on that, so, so anyway, I think that, that we need to provide a little more specific direction to Lee, because if the direction is 2 to 2, we're not helping Lee at all.
Well, without further direction, and actually, as good, just kind of reminds me that I appreciate, you know, I'm bringing this forward even though we're going to have three more, three new board members next month. This board has been very involved in dealing with these titles and the zoning code while you've been here. Your input's valuable, so we definitely wanted to do this. And ultimately, I think this looks like a situation where I'll make the changes in the draft and then whether or not those changes get passed is going to be up to the next board. But I think it's worth, with kind of this split, showing the changes to get discussion on the changes. If, is the approach I would take with no further direction.
Yeah, and I think I'd like to ask both John and Stacy if they would support a change in the language to 10 with these additional requirements. John?
Explain that, that effect.
On number 10, we would change it from only family members being able to live in the accessory dwelling units to being able to lease them to anybody as long as the owner, the property owner is an occupant of either primary or accessory dwelling, that it's a minimum 30-day stay, that there's only one accessory dwelling unit allowed per parcel, and that the minimum parcel size is 8,000 square feet.
I would consider that, you know, I'd have to see the final language and et cetera. From what you described, though, I would consider it, but I don't know, as Lee was saying, whether I'm going to get to consider it, but-
Right, but today we're-
Again, we're throwing it into the court of the next board in many ways.
Okay.
I'd have to see the final project and how the Commission felt about it, too, because I tend, not always, but I tend often to follow the people who follow whatever their prerogatives. And the Commission is a separate entity, but advisory, so.
Does that give you some better direction?
Is that too much? I'm being, I'm being a little bit vague on it because actually, in one, in one sense, what I described as going on elsewhere makes some sense to me, but that's a business. That's not right business. That person actually has gone and bought an RV and is living off the property at the moment, so that would not be allowed under what you just said.
All right, thank you, John. Does that give you some better direction?
It does, and I would just say, when you're saying the 30-day limitation, I just, I would suggest it's 28 days is the transient occupancy, that's the four weeks, that's the length of February. So that's typically the number that we use and for the-
For consistency.
Short-term, long-term, yeah.
Yep.
Well, your point's well taken, although I've always sort of felt in the transient occupancy tax situation that I don't like that, but that's another, that's a horse of a different color.
All right, Lee, can we go back at this point to 18.05.055, which in our package is page 1,000? Can you just kind of walk us through the changes on, the proposed changes on the square footage allowed on accessory structure sizes and how that triggers either an administrative permit or a special use permit? Because that's all changing now. In my particular case, on my property, I'm currently required to have a special use permit, but under these new proposed changes would not be required to have a special use permit.
I didn't list that as one of my topics, but I, but I prepared a slide for it, so I got that up there now, if you could see it. So, yeah, 18.05 is accessory structures and there, there's a couple of changes in that section in general. First, not this one. The other, one is that the building, a threshold for a storage building requiring a building permit used to be 120 square feet a few years ago. It's now 200 square feet per the building code. So with regards to the setbacks for detached storage structures of certain size limitations, that 200 square feet is the new threshold, so that's just an explanation of that. To your question, you were talking about when a special use permit or other administrative permit is required for accessory structures. So just to go over what the regulation is now real quick is, for detached structures, based on the cumulative square footage of your detached structures as a percentage of your primary structure, and the primary structures includes the residence plus your attached garage, so it's, it's a percentage of the size of your primary structure. Currently, if it's over 50%, it requires an administrative permit. That's basically a special use permit, but it doesn't go to the Planning Commission. You do everything you do for a special use permit. It's a public hearing. Property owners get noticed, but it's an administrative hearings officer that hears it. If it's over, if your, if your accessory structures exceed 75%, it's a special use permit and goes to the Planning Commission. Under the, under the current regulations, there's, there's almost, probably almost one accessory structure per Planning Commission meeting. It's not quite, not quite, but we get a lot of them. Sometimes there's two-on-one, sometimes there's not, and sometimes there's multiples on one agenda, but it's, it's pretty common. They're routinely approved, usually without a lot of contributions first, until they're, unless they're really big buildings. There are certainly some of them that are more than the 75% percentage that are, that are on there. So what's on my slide there is, that's the current requirement, and the proposed requirement is to bump those thresholds up by 75% so that you're permitted to do it by right up to 75% of your primary size. And then over 75% is an administrative permit, and then it's not a special use permit till you're over 100%. Furthermore, there's currently no kind of baseline limitation. If you have a very small house on a property, you, you don't get a very big accessory dwelling. You could conceivably have a small enough house where you couldn't build a two-car garage, a detached two-car garage. So one of the additions would be to, to allow by right up to 500 square feet of detached accessory structure on parcels less than a half acre and then up to 1,000 square feet by rights on parcels in the one-acre zoning district or larger. Does that, did that answer your question?
Yes, and then there was an additional proposed deletion of the requirement for accessory structure, accessory structures not to exceed 5% of the parcel size without a special use permit.
Yeah, and that's another part that's been deleted currently, that's right. A current requirement would be an special use permit, I missed that bullet, because a current requirement, if you exceed 5% of the total lot area with accessory structures, it requires a special use permit. In practice, if you exceed that, you exceed one of the other things. So what we've seen is, there's, I think there was one time where somebody exceeded 5% without exceeding the other threshold of their, of their residence. So it's kind of another layer in there that just, we didn't feel needs to be in there, so that's deleted. That, that this, this portion, the revised ones addresses the same issue that that's trying to address, which is the size of accessory structures.
Are there any questions for Lee on, on that item? Go ahead.
So just kind of, so that I understand this, the up to 500 or the up to 1,000, is that for one accessory unit or grand total?
It's all cumulative, it's all cumulative, yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's cumulative, so they can't put in three, 333 square-foot accessory, okay. Up.
Thank you, Lee. So we can go back now to our regularly scheduled comments.
Okay, the last item that I think there, actually, for the Planning Commission, so then, so the next item is personal storage containers. And in particular, I wanted to talk about the metal storage containers in residential districts, which are currently prohibited outright under all circumstances. You can't use them for storage or anything else. You can't have a metal storage container in a residential district. It's actually the subject of quite a bit of code enforcement issues.
Can we, can we clarify, when you say metal storage container, you're talking about like a Conex box or something like that? Because there are metal storage buildings, but that's not what you're talking about.
Right, so it's metal storage containers-
Like a Conex box or-
Cargo containers, and I think part of it was in the definitions and other sections of code was using those terms that kind of more clarify that, which, which in fact, that very point was kind of one of the, one of the issues I brought up and showing pictures to the Planning Commission. It's like, this is permitted, this is not. One is a metal shed, one is a metal storage container, and similar in size, appear, now, there are some storage containers that don't look as good as others, but you can have, you could have a rusty old storage shed that's permitted, but you can't have a well-painted Conex box shipping container. So, and like I said, and these, there's somebody, somebody selling them, the residents are buying them, they are, they are simple storage to be put on the lot. They just, they just show up and then somebody, the neighbor calls and it becomes a code enforcement issue. So the, the result, and the, and the Planning Commission's recommendation, after quite a bit of discussion and I think some, some back, some back and forth and some skepticism and other, is to allow them, provided, primarily, and to treat them like other accessory structures, so they have to be placed to meet the setbacks and height and whatever other requirements there are for accessory structures. And the primary thing is that they must be fully covered in building and siding material to have the appearance of a permanent structure and painted to blend with the primary structure. So they're, they're not rusty old, so they don't look like rusty old shipping containers, which they certainly can right now. So I think that's the main thing. And with that requirement and treating them like a storage building, I think then at that point you get, well, it's a, it is a metal storage container and I have to look at that, but, well, it could be any other permanent building and it could be in that same place, it could be in that same height, and you'd have to look at that. So I think the point is to treat it like a building, make it look more like a building, make it be placed where only a building accessory structure can be placed and allow. So that's, that's the recommendation.
Which makes you wonder why they just, if they have to put the siding and the roof and the foundation on there, why they need the storage container inside of that? You don't have to answer that. It's just, to me, I mean, that's what I think of. If you have to go to all this trouble and build the walls, the roof, and the floor, then why do you need the, the metal storage container inside? Interesting question.
Yeah, I think, you know, just anecdotally, I mean, storage contain, it's, storage buildings aren't cheap, you know, storage sheds aren't cheap. I think they used to be pretty reasonable to be able to go build a shed, but you can, you know, they're, people are buying these used shipping containers for, for cheaper than they can get a, a new storage shed. than they can get a, a new storage shed. But I get your point. Then you have to, now you're going to have the additional cost of, of making it, of adding to it and making it look nice and put the siding on. But yeah, that's the recommendation.
So just so I understand it, I, I have an acre, I, I get a Conex box or I come in, apply to get a Conex box, you're going to say, show me the plans to make it look like a building and then potentially it'll get approved. You get it delivered, put it on the ground, put some siding up that makes it look like a building and it's okay?
That would be the, that would be the process.
That's the proposal.
Yeah, I was going to mention too, that, that's what it says, metal storage container, application to the director. So it's the same process that we have for metal storage containers in commercial and in industrial areas now. There's an application, it's a simple application, but where we request.
Still, you're going to ask to see what, what they're going to cover the side with. And, and so just to be clear, because I, I sent you an email, which I'm sure you've seen at this point, but I had someone email me that said, they, are, are Conex trailers allowed now then by code?
They are not. So yeah, to, to the point I was going to, I was going to mention, so this, this conversation has really just come up with, in the last month with the, with the planning commission. And now knowing this was coming to the board, you know, the code enforcement has, I, I think they told me like thirty active metal storage container complaints on residential parcels right now. And I've just told them pending this discussion to, don't write citations right now, let me see what direction this is going. And, and it's going to be, you know, I, I, I don't know what we're going to do because this isn't going to get adopted in the next month or two either. And there's some metal storage containers out there right now and many of them not even placed where they would be allowed and we don't know.
Well, you know, for my two cents worth, while the ordinance is still in place, it's not allowing them, I would not allow them. I mean, because most of the ones that I think we're talking about and the ones I've seen around town look like rusted Conex boxes. And I wouldn't want one, you know, next to me. And I think I could buy off on these suggested changes because I think it can make the neighborhood, you know, better, but I'm, my, my guess is the people that have these right now are not going to go to this extent. And if they are, it's going to take them a while to get there.
I, I think that you're going to get general agreement on that from us, that code enforcement should be directed to continue enforcement on this until there, such time that there is a change in the ordinance. Because what will happen is that people will feel that the ones that are there illegally now are going to be grandfathered in or that they will be entitled to them because they've been there for three months, six months, nine months.
So I, I would say I concur with what Stacy and Brad said, that code enforcement should do any code that currently exists. And may I ask on B, three B on that, where you say, or to blend or painted earth tone colors? Why wouldn't we just leave it that it's got to blend with their primary structure? Because I get, I, I just hate for you to have to decide the, I've seen samples, so there's this ugly green Conex box that's out there. Is that a, a earth tone? I'm just suggesting to you, why would you do that to yourself? Have them submit a picture that says it, that it matches their, their current structure? Because then they're not as offensive, like you said. I'm looking across the street and I'm seeing a greenhouse, whatever the house is now, the box can match it.
Yeah, I think that would be fine. This, this verbiage comes from existing verbiage for commercials and, and industrial areas. You know, not everybody's going to like the color of the next door neighbor's house either, but I, that's, I, I think it would be fine to say that, yeah.
I think I would agree that as well. I think it's hard to argue that green is not an earth tone, but yet it's obnoxious. So I think that we could probably leave that to your discretion.
Yeah, there, there's a house in my daughter's neighborhood that's a bright blue that you might consider earth toned because it's a color of the sky and I think it's atrocious, but you know.
And then Lee.
I kind of, I generally don't like, actually, that kind of, we got rid of that in the commercial development standards, actually, if you notice, because that kind of earth tone issue is, there's a lot of earth tone colors that aren't really what we're shooting for, yeah.
And then Lee, I had asked for a change in division one, item one point one zero one subsection, or excuse me, yeah, one.
On page ten thirty-two, it's.
It's one F.
It's one ten and then section one C one. And it's an increase, so this relates to, we're off, we're off of metal storage containers now. And this is personal storage facilities. This is your so-called self, self-storage. And this, this applies to storage units, self-storage units adjacent to residential zoning districts, which it currently says they shall not exceed fourteen feet. And the suggestion is to make that sixteen feet so that it's tall enough to get an RV in. And the purpose of that, it's, it's, right now it's fourteen feet instead of thirty-two to forty-five, depending on what zoning district is. So the, the change from fourteen to sixteen is, is minimal. And if that makes sense for RV storage height, then that, that's a good change.
Right, an RV would require a fourteen foot roll-up door, which means you'd have to have a minimum sixteen foot height, yeah. Okay. Any questions or comments? John?
Nope.
Okay. Okay, were there any other sections that anybody wanted to bring up with Lee on, on the Title eighteen, chapter five? Or division one?
I, I didn't have any others. The rest of it made sense to me, the changes.
Okay, John, you're good? Okay, all right. So you have your direction from us? This is discussion only, no action required other than the discussion? You may ask a question.
Lee, just, I, you know, I know, again, I know this is a tremendous amount of work and just please pass along to the planning commission our thanks because I know we all believe it's important to, to make these things make sense and to avoid duplications. And so thanks for all your efforts and, and thank them too, because it's a lot of, a lot of work on your part. When, when do you see this coming to fruition in terms of a, a, a package, you know, that, that might be ready to have a first reading? And I, and I'd rather not hurry it up. The pace we're doing is good, so I'm not asking because I want it to go faster. I'm just asking, just so I have an idea in my head.
Yeah, I actually set up a meeting with the DA's office to start to discuss how we get from this point because, well, let's see, I don't have any slides with like all of Title eighteen, but we've gone through, we've gone through administration definitions, where, where uses are permitted and now kind of development standards for a lot of uses. We're kind of to a point where these, all of those pieces fit together properly and we could start making changes. The other, with incorporating a couple other sections in there, as we get into, further into the divisions of the development standards, they really stand on their own, like, like on the screen there. December seventh, the planning commission's going to be talking about parking standards and landscaping standards. After that, there's sign standards, which are all important and are need to be looked at and amended, but they kind of start to stand alone. So I, I don't have an answer as to when this is going to start to come together, but I would say we're going to, we're going to talk about that. Dan, do you have any suggestion at this point?
Sure. Yeah, if it pleases the board, you know, I guess what I would say is it really kind of depends on what direction the board wants the DA to go in. And, and what I mean by that is it's, it's a simple task if all we're doing is, you know, playing the role of Scrivener, meaning, you know, the language that's inserted so long as it quote unquote works and makes sense to a certain degree for, for enforcement purposes. That's, that's a much easier task than rewriting the language that's proposed to make it so that it conforms with the drafting manual that's been adopted. That also means reorganizing all of the chapters and reorganizing the current provisions that are in place, resequencing everything. So that's not just, you know, fiddling around with the language as proposed in its current form, but actually rewriting everything, making sure that we've captured the intent of the planning commission's staff and the board. And at the same time, conforming the language, the style conventions that were adapted by or adopted by this board, I should say, not by this board, but as directed by this board, which culminated in, in, in the drafting manual as prepared by my office. So we're looking at two separate approaches here. And, and, and the way we've approached ordinances over the last year or two years, I would say, has been a little bit of a mishmash of both, depending on the urgency of the matter. So if it's something that we need to get through right away and time is of the essence and it's a large complicated ordinance, we will make every effort, as we do with every ordinance, to make sure that it's fully defensible, it's legally enforceable and the mechanics of it work in operation. And the second, you know, consideration would be, well, whether or not we're actually making those changes to make it conform to the drafting manual. If time is not of the essence and we have more time to work on it to restructure everything appropriately, that's obviously going to take a lot more time. So, so the analogy I've used before in the past is this, you know, if somebody says, hey, you know, you take a car to a mechanic and say, we just need you to fix what's under the hood to make sure it's running, that's, that's a much shorter project than for somebody to drop off a car to mechanics and say, not only do I want it running, but I also want it looking pristine. Two totally different projects. So to answer the question I think that's being posed on the record here, how long would it take? Well, I, I mean, just looking at what I have in front of me, I mean, this would take weeks, I mean, possibly months. I, I think Lee has mentioned before in the past, you know, another sister jurisdiction, perhaps Reno, you know, was looking at reorganizing and refining, you know, their development standards and their zoning ordinances. And I think you said it was a multi-year process. And for us, you know, the multi-year process, we've adopted the tentative timeline by the DA's office, you know, for four or five years, is a reorganization and a refinement of our entire code, which is, you know, twenty titles. So to say we're on a fast track is, I would say, sort of an understatement. We're definitely trying to push things out ASAP. But for something like this, where it's substantive and it requires a lot of collaboration between, you know, the drafter from my office, a lot of that would be on me, but it also entails collaboration with staff, which are the subject matter experts. So we would make sure that, you know, whenever we're, for example, providing a definition for a term, that we don't miss the intent, you know? So that takes a lot of back and forth. It's not just a matter of staff or the planning commission dropping off a manual with us and us rewriting it. We'd have to sit down and, and kind of, you know, collaborate through that. So I, I don't know if I'm giving a succinct answer, but I think, like I said, there are two separate approaches here.
Yeah, my recollection of the intent of this undertaking, as well as drafting the ordinance manual, was for a complete rewrite of the CCMC. And it is a multi-year, or the discussion was it would be a multi-year task. And I believe we allowed two or three years just for Title eighteen, if I remember correctly. And so I don't know if that's helpful. We're not even a year into it, so.
Yeah, no, I mean, I guess, yeah. I, I mean, at some point, we could talk about this all day. You know, at some point, we're going to have to start writing ordinances in the manner of the new drafting manual, right? I mean, at some point, that switch has to be flipped. And I, you know, I, I can't imagine I'm hearing you say that we're going to take months to draft any ordinance once that switch is flipped. But I guess what I hear you saying is that because it's in a format that doesn't currently match what our drafting manual says, the time involved is getting from point A to point B.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I guess what I'm saying is every opportunity we have, we should be drafting ordinances, in my opinion, in, in the right format, given that time allows for it. We can have this discussion offline because it isn't material to hear, but I, you know, I, I think, understanding what you're saying, I'm comfortable making the changes as opposed to waiting, you know, a year for us to have these out and, and effective and working to, to get them in this new format.
Yeah, I think I would keep in mind too, that at least in my opinion, Title eighteen and the CCMC is the most daunting task of the entire code. So I don't know that we want to judge the entire code by Title eighteen.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I guess I'm just saying, I don't know that we, and I guess that's our decision. I don't know that I want to wait until Dan and his team can draft this in the new format to get these changes rolled out. I think I would accept them in the current format to get the changes in place and us operating under the, you know, these, these changes that we've been worked on here the last two or three months or four months.
Yeah, I, I think that we can all give you some input on that. I would generally agree with that, that we would roll these changes out now, subject to the DA's office rewriting the chapter at some point over the next couple of years. Is, is that your understanding as well, Dan?
I, I'm not sure if I follow entirely. I, I think if, if what you're saying is, well, if I'm hearing you right, I think what you're saying is maybe the approach is just to get it done first, but then we'll revisit it as we continue with the code overhaul?
Correct.
Okay. Sure, we could do that. I mean, that would just be a revisitation of the same, you know, provisions. But I, I think maybe that's something that's going to be a necessity later on anyway, because I think the entire code, five years from now, four years from now, is going to look very, very different from what we're looking at today. And I'll just use an example from earlier today, the utility rate ordinance, not very long, but I mean, behind doors, behind the scenes, I mean, I would say it probably went through seven or eight various drafts and that's just between me and Todd. And, and, you know, we're talking weekends, late nights and at two AM, three AM, just to revise certain sections of that to make it conform to the drafting manual, but at the same time, make it so that it captures everyone's intent accurately. So yes, if all we're going to do is to make sure that for the most part, the mechanics of this works, that's a, that's a pretty, that, that's a much easier task for us. It's a much quicker task to, for us to get from point A to point B. But later on, when we do revisit it, and we actually have that time to sit down and reconform that language, the end product a few years out is going to look drastically different.
And so I'd like to hear from John and Stacy, from Lori, but I, I just want to make sure that I'm clear that what you're not saying is that you wouldn't do the complete rewrite of the code. It's just that it's going to take several years to get to the point to where you have a draft for that.
That, that's correct.
Okay, Lori and John, your thoughts?
So I thought for Title eighteen, our goal was to finish that by the end of next year. And it would be, right, it was a two-year, we're already one year in, we'd spend the next and you would draft it according to the new manual. So I need to clearly understand, can we accomplish this in the next year? Because the whole idea of you striking language and saying it's in another section and the problem's going to be, we can't just, I don't want to say it wrong, we can't just slap out what we did today because we don't have the other section that it would still be in. And we're not reviewing that other section yet. So I, I'm concerned that we start making mistakes because we're trying to do it pursuant to the new drafting rules and looking for duplications and looking for, whoops, it's repeated in this section and it says something different. So can we stay on target for next December for having Title eighteen pursuant to the new drafting manual? Because that'll help make my decision.
Well, I can, I can promise you, we will do our very best. And, and.
If we can do it in the next year, then I'm comfortable. If it's going to take longer than that, then we revert to what we were just talking about here and start putting some of these out the way they're drafted now. But I'd really prefer to do it.
Sure. No, and Supervisor Bagwell, I mean, I think that's a fair question to ask. I mean, all you're really asking for is a ballpark ETA on, on, on getting the end result. It's a fair question. You know, I, I don't like to make any promises I can't absolutely keep on the record. And, and I would just say, you know, part of this is, you know, when we receive the materials, right, in final proposed form. So there's been a little bit of a delay. Some of the workshops have been pushed out because of COVID, couldn't have the meetings. That's, that was some of it. And I think that caused a delay by several months in and of itself. a delay by several months in and of itself. If we were to get everything in fairly final form, let's say, within the next couple of months or so, given us an additional 10 months, if we're going to calculate this out to next December, I think it's feasible. I mean, I think it's actually more than feasible, let's put it that way. A lot of that sort of depends on everything else that happens in the city, you know, there's always that unknown. But, yes, I think it's a feasible, and I think it's a very reasonable timeframe. Part of the other issue, as the Board members know too, is that we don't have a lot of attorneys in my office. And the code overhaul primarily is, it's, I mean, that's my project. So it's whenever I'm able to find time outside of my ordinary day-to-day duties that I get into the code to overhaul it. So I'll do my best.
I want to give John a chance for-
Oh, thank you. I'm caught on the horns of ambivalence, which isn't always where I find myself. But on this one, on the one hand, I've spent my life covering government as a reporter and going, whoa, why can't this stuff be written more clearly? Which is not a criticism of anybody, Dan, it's just the way it is, because it gets done over time, and so it takes a lot of time to rewrite it. Having been a writer most of my life, I recognize that writing is easy, all you have to do is sit down at a computer, or a typewriter, or wherever your methodology is, and sweat blood out of your forehead. So I'd have to say, despite my desire to have this thing read like a novel, I know it won't, and secondly, I always say, sometimes government works too fast, and sometimes government works too slowly. I urge you to work as slowly as it requires.
Yeah, I think one of the suggestions I would make, then I'll go to you, Stacy, would be, we're going to be coming up on budget season, and so I think that maybe one of the things we should do is look at potentially budgeting for an extra temporary position in the DA's office, for somebody that can come in and work on the drafting, so you can supervise them and give them direction, and you would have final say over it. But this is something that needs to be done. I don't want it to go on, I'm not hearing anybody say that it needs, that we want it to go on forever. And so if that means that we are the authority that can help you out there and get it done, and get it done right, without putting all that additional work on the existing staff, then I think that that's something that should be seriously considered. Stacy?
Yeah, I don't disagree with that, and also, and I thought we did in either last year or the year before, increase their attorney by half, yeah. I agree with Lori, if the schedule is generally, and I do mean generally, you know, December, then I would say, let's not do it in the current format, let's do it and get it right the first time. But I just would remind Dan, there are 24 hours in the day, Dan, so.
We're taking 23, if you could give us the 24th.
We're taking 23 today, we're taking 23 of them.
To ask in general, you show the upcoming workshop for December 7th is going to hit Division 2 and Division 3, how many more are left to go?
I think there's, well, I think there's 20 overall, but the thing is, some of the, after, so there's 2, 3, and then 4 is signs, there's downtown mixed-use in there, which is already kind of-
But we're getting through the meaty ones.
And there's, you know, then there's engineering things, and there's other parks, and there's parks and trail standards that aren't, well, they're not zoning-related particularly, there are other department standards, so I guess the question is, how, you know, how much of a process do we need to go through to change those versus just incorporating those into the proper format and rearranging them?
That's really what I was after, is that we schedule these to really get them done in the next three months, so that the DA's office has the maximum amount of time to get it done on schedule.
All right. Last call for any questions, direction, comments?
I have one more thing to say, since Lori brought this up, I'm intrigued. I've lived all over this country, and so has my wife, and one of the things we've noticed everywhere we lived is that, for some reason, parking gets short-changed. We seem to buy bigger cars, more cars, et cetera, et cetera, so as you go through that one, keep that in mind, it's just a general comment, but parking is really a bigger issue than we realize, especially now that we're going to electric and autonomous vehicles. Maybe that'll change it, because the vehicles will keep moving and they'll be autonomous, but parking's a tough one. And of course, I love landscaping, I'll just leave it at that.
I could give you some reasons, but that's another conversation for another day. All right, last call. Dan, go ahead.
So I just wanted to make a final comment, you know, before we move on, and, you know, I just want to say, you know, on behalf of the DA's office, you know, we certainly appreciate, you know, the latitude that's been given to us by this Board. You know, we understand that this is a very important project for this Board, and, you know, I don't think it's lost on anyone, that this is a very, very important project for my boss, the District Attorney, you know, Jason Woodbury. And it's front and center on our radar at all times, we discuss it on a monthly basis, and we are constantly pushing to make as much headway with this as possible. So I just wanted the Board to know that, and, you know, we're, we'll get through it. I think that, you know, this has been kind of an odd year, so, you know, maybe some things got delayed, but for the most part, we're actually about on track. You know, there are a lot of things that are being done to the code that are not being brought to the Board for adoption, and those are sort of the mechanical fixes, but there's actually quite a bit of headway happening behind the scenes, and it's just a matter of time before we bring it to this Board in different segments for first and second reading. But again, I just wanted to say, and express my appreciation, you know, for the latitude that's been given to us.
Thank you, Dan. All right, if there's no additional comments or questions, then we will close discussion on Agenda Item 18, and we will move to Agenda Item 19, which is our final public comment. Does he, is there anybody on the line for public comment?
I see no final public comment, Mayor Broten.
Thank you very much. With that, we will move to Agenda Item 20, for possible action to adjourn. We are adjourned, thank you very much.